Good evening, everyone. This regular meeting of the Board of Education for January 23rd, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers at home. This evening, we are holding our board meeting at Benson High School as part of the new Board's commitment to hold some of our meetings in the community versus the school district's administrative headquarters. Benson Polytechnic High School, founded in 1915, is Portland's premier four-year career technical education-focused high school. Benson offers academic rigor and the practical training that prepares students for college in the highly skilled, highly-paid, 21st-century workforce. I'd like to thank the Benson community for welcoming the Board, Superintendent Guerrero, and the broader community into your school this evening.
Thank you, Moses. You didn't mention it, but Moses is our student rep this year and also a Benson student, so it's appropriate that he opens the meeting in his home school. So for tonight's meeting, it's being televised and it'll be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live by PPS TV Services. As a reminder, we now have our PPS ombudsman, Judy Martin, attending all regular board meetings. Specifically, Judy will be here to listen to public comments and, if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or wanted. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045, or at ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening, and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they will be interpreting, and inform the audience where they will be located in the auditorium should someone need assistance.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. If you need a translator, please call us. We'll be right back. Thank you very much.
Buenas tardes. My name is Angel Jimenez. I'm an interpreter. If you need an interpreter, you can find me on my left hand or your left hand. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angel. I'm a Somali speaker. Please translate.
Hello, I'm Tatiana. If you need a translator, please call me on the right hand.
Tonight, I'd like to introduce Benson High School Principal Curtis Wilson Jr. Principal Wilson has been at Benson for 10 years, the first five years as vice-principal and the remaining five years as principal. We thank him for his service to PPS and the students of the Benson community. We would like you and the Benson's ASB student president, Enrique Telles, to kick off our meeting tonight with a welcome and share some comments about Benson.
Thank you, Moses. Enrique's going to come up in a second. I'm going to have him have the stage to himself. I would like to thank everyone for coming to Benson Polytechnic High School tonight. It is a great honor to have the Board here. I was able to give our superintendent and some distinguished guests a tour of Benson. It's a fantastic school, 70 percent of students of color, but we have a graduation rate that's always in the high 80s. This is my fifth year at Benson, and I will say that with the CTE component and the academic component, we work hand-in-hand every day to ensure that our students are successful as they can be as they navigate the halls of Benson Polytechnic High School. We will be having a great event that's coming on March 15th and 16th. That's our tech show. That's when we open up our doors in the evening from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we allow anyone from the city to come in and check out Benson, and the school is yours. You can see whatever you want, because at Benson, you have to apply to get in, and we want everyone to have an ample opportunity to see Benson before they make that decision about whether or not to come to Benson Tech. So again, that's March 15th and 16th is our tech show night. I would also like to give a plug to our girls' basketball team. They're now ranked first in the PIL and fifth in state, and it's been a long time coming for our athletic programs here. Thank you. You know, the staff is very supportive of Benson. They work very hard, CTE staff, academic staff. They believe in fostering support for our students, and it shows in our numbers, in our data, and so I'm very, very proud to be the principal here at Benson Tech. And with that being said, I don't want to take up any more time. I want to give a couple of gifts to our distinguished Board, and then I'm going to turn it over to Enrique. So stay with me for about 30 seconds as we do this. This is what we call Benson swag, and so we're just going to pass this out to the Board.
Thank you, Curtis.
You're going to get more.
All right, cool. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Take it again.
Last but not least, one of the people I attended, this is a scarf, and simply put that on, and then the last piece says, "We have a manufacturing department here that's very, very, very passionate about our staff, and so, but each of that member, we make nameplates, so they would go and...
Thank you, Principal Wilson.
So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to our ASB student body president, Enrique Telles.
Can you get a mic? Curtis, can you give him a mic?
Thank you, Principal Wilson. Is this on right? Hi, my name is Enrique Telles. I am the current... I'll get that in a bit. I am the current ASB president here at Benson High School. It is such an honor to have all of you guys here today in my school, which I consider home. Many of you guys may not know that Benson epitomizes diversity here at Benson because of our numbers. We almost represent equally every single race, and that is something that's so important to me, diversity, because we're able to pull out everybody from every single zone, every demographic, and it is just such a great thing. A little bit about me, as a student that regularly walks these halls, as a senior this year. I am the current captain of the Benson track team. I've been in varsity football, varsity soccer, and let me just tell you, this school is something else. They're so supportive here, and everybody here makes you feel like you are loved, like you are welcomed, something that not many people get the feel at home. Many kids here come from a very difficult background, and it's so nice to be able to come to a school where you are supported, where you are welcomed. I take great honor having everybody here today, just because I love the way that we have the spirit, and I love the way you guys can come here and see our school spirit. So that being said, once again, I'd like to welcome the public, the Board, and everybody on that's watching from TV here at Benson High School. Thank you guys so much for being here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Second speaker?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you for hosting us tonight and for the swag. It's always appreciated. So next on our agenda, it's something that's quite appropriate that we happen to be at Benson tonight, because tonight, the Board, in association with Portland General Electric, is going to be honoring Jim Pyro. Jim graduated from Benson in 1970 and had a long and successful career at PGE, and he also has decades of service as a community leader. There wasn't often a time when PPS didn't need somebody, some leadership from the business community, that Jim didn't raise his hand or, when asked, volunteer, and he also always had a very soft spot for all things Benson. So that was really the easiest way to get him to volunteer. Somehow make it about the Techmen or Benson, and he was on board. So in honor of Mr. Pyro's retirement, PGE made a very generous $100,000 contribution to Benson's engineering program, and this evening, we wanted to present Mr. Pyro with a proclamation recognizing the sort of decades of service, not only to the Portland community, to public education, but also to Portland Public Schools and his school, Benson High School. So at this time, I'd like to ask Paul Anthony, a parent of two Benson students, to read the proclamation from Portland Public Schools, and then after that, we're going to ask you, Jim, to come forward and have a picture taken with the superintendent and the Board, and we'll present you with the proclamation. Director Anthony?
Whereas Jim Pyro attended Benson Polytechnic High School in Portland, Oregon, where he was actively engaged and served as student body president before graduating in 1970. And whereas inspired by his high school experience, Jim pursued a civil engineering degree at Oregon State University and graduated in 1974. And whereas he began his 37-year career at Portland General Electric in 1980 as an engineer and served as the company's president and CEO from 2009 to 2017. And whereas he inspired PGE employees to give back to the communities where they live, work, and play through his active community involvement, epitomizing PGE's 129-year tradition of community spirit. And whereas he has championed access to science, technology, engineering, and math, and equitable opportunities for every Oregon student. And whereas he served on the all-hands-raised Cradle-to-Career Leadership Council, the Benson Polytech High School Master Planning Committee, Oregon Business Council's Education Task Force, Oregon STEM Investment Council, and Oregon State University Foundation's Board of Directors. And whereas, in honor of Jim's career and community leadership, PGE made a $100,000 donation to Portland Public Schools for its Benson Polytechnic High School's engineering program. Let it be resolved that Portland Public Schools Board of Education does hereby recognize Jim Pyro for his steadfast dedication to students throughout Oregon and his leadership role in expanding opportunities in career technical education and STEM, giving students the opportunity to explore new pathways and careers which will help power their potential.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a big auditorium. Remember what it's about? Is it white or gray? Is it light or gray? Thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you. 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 I just want to thank the Board for their support of Benson. It's really exciting to see Benson being rebuilt to its historic days. When I went here, it was one of the finest technical high schools in the nation, and it's good to see it going to be restored to that kind of pristine outcome, so I'm really excited about that. Also, I just wanted to let you know that my wife and I decided to match the grant, so it's now $200,000. Woo-hoo! It's $200,000.
Thank you so much, Jim. There'll always be a place for you here at Benson, and we know that you have lots of things that you can do in your retirement, and we hope that you still answer the call when we call, and really best wishes in your retirement, and thank you for everything you've done for our community. Before we get into tonight's agenda, I'd like to ask Director Moore to just announce some appointments to the design advisory groups for the rebuilds, including Benson.
In May 2017, voters approved a $790 million bond to make health and safety improvements and to rebuild or modernize four schools: Kellogg Middle School, Benson High School, Lincoln High School, and Madison High School. Each of the school communities will have a Design Advisory Group, or DAG, to advise PPS on the rebuilds or modernizations. We appreciate the ongoing work and leadership of the staff and the Office of School Modernization and all the community and school volunteers who are working together to reimagine and design the schools that will be built in the next four to five years. As with the 2012 bond projects, each DAG will have a Board representative whose role will be primarily to observe, ensure that the advisory process is being productive and well-facilitated, and keep the full Board apprised of developments. Tonight, we're making the following Board appointments. For the Kellogg Middle School DAG, Director Mike Rosen. For the Benson High School DAG, Director Paul Anthony. For Lincoln High School DAG, Director Amy Konstam. And for the Madison High School DAG, Director Scott Bailey. Additional appointments may be made at a later date.
Thank you, Director Moore. So we had some pretty exciting news this afternoon. We announced that we have a tentative agreement with the Portland Association of Teachers, and it's been a long process, and I want to... we're going to have... it's a several-week ratification process, but just tonight, before we sort of kick off and announce the news, just want to thank the district team that participated, spent many long hours in... as part of the negotiating team, Superintendent Guerrero, starting as soon as he got here, our lead negotiator, Laird Cusack, Kylie Rogers, Jen Thomas, Anthony Lopez... Antonia Lopez. Also, we had three Board members. We had Director Moore and Director Konstam, and I think Director Konstam and Antonia Lopez get the award for they were there throughout the entire time and really stayed through it to see it through to the end. We also had two principals on the district team, Kathleen Elwood, who's middle school planning principal, but also Curtis Wilson, so when he's not busy running Benson, also contributing to the work at the district. And we... I will just say that the months that we sat and worked through the issues, it was professional, it was collegial. People were determined to reach an agreement, knowing that that was the best outcome for our students and for our staff, and that we had a lot of issues to work through, but it was very gratifying this afternoon to sort of finally get the word that we have a tentative agreement. So that's great news. The process by which Portland Association of Teachers will have their process for ratification. Following the ratification by PAT, then the district will... the school board will release the tentative agreement. We'll... looks like we're shooting tentatively for a board meeting and vote on February 8th, and that will... that would conclude the ratification process. So very excited, and again, thank you to Superintendent, the Board members, and the school staff who participated for the district, and also to our partners with the Portland Association of Teachers who came with the spirit of cooperation and professionalism and, you know, wanting to get the job done. Director Moore or Konstam, do you want to say anything?
I would just add, from looking at what a long journey it was, in a way, it was really fortuitous that it didn't come together until after our permanent superintendent was here, because it really gave us the opportunity to have important substantive conversations with our union representatives about the direction that we all want to take together and the reform that we all want to work toward for our students, and the superintendent's vision was an essential component in charting that path, and I really do feel like this is a path that we have created collaboratively, that we have come to the table with our different perspectives and frustrations and experiences and needs, and we have made the path together. And that was really important, and we look forward to your leadership in putting it all together from this point forward.
Director Moore?
So I was one of the newbies on the bargaining team. I've only been at it for seven months, and it was... it was actually a... it was kind of... it sounds a little trite, but it was actually kind of an inspiring process. It was... it was really exciting to see PPS and PAT work together to come up with an agreement that I think is going to be good for the district, good for our staff, and, most important, good for our students. And I eagerly await the release of the contract text. I think we can all be proud of this agreement, and I'm looking forward to moving on.
Superintendent Guerrero?
I'd love to say a couple of words. Chair Brim Edwards, you named a number of individuals who played an important role, particularly on the district team. Thank you, all of you, for your hard work there, and equally for the persistent engagement on behalf of the representatives from PAT as well. This is an important milestone. I feel this has been a long time coming, but I have left our bargaining sessions extremely optimistic about the kind of positive working relationship that we want to have moving forward, one that's focused on our students and on supporting our educators. This only begins to set the stage. Our real work is just beginning together, and that's going to require us to roll up our sleeves and create those forums and those dialogues to take on a lot of the persistent challenges that have been here in Portland Public Schools that there are real solutions for if we can be creative about those. So I also want to really thank the PAT leadership for staying with the process, and we took on a lot of tough topics. There are some next steps that will come. Our teachers will have an opportunity to learn more about the details of the contract, and we'll have an important ratification vote in the coming week, and our principals will begin to learn more details as well, since they will play an important part in ensuring that we're implementing our agreement, and our Board of Education will also have the opportunity to confirm that. But more than anything, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Everyone has had to be very patient through this process, but I'm very pleased by the way things culminated at the end. I think that was a very genuine and collective sense of partnership that we're prepared to start a journey on together.
Thank you. So really nice way to start the new year with an agreement with a really important group of individuals who every day help in our essential delivery of our mission. Next, given the national conversation that's happening, I've asked Director Sparza Brown to speak to a resolution we passed last year and just renew our commitment.
On September 12th, 2017, our school board adopted Resolution 5509 in support of DACA Dreamers. Given the current national context and recent actions by our national leaders, the Board would like to reaffirm our commitment and support for all of our immigrant students, staff, and families who add to the richness and diversity in our community. As a district representative, I am currently a member of the mayor's Sanctuary City Task Force as various agencies work together to coordinate our efforts around these issues. So we will continue in our district to fully develop our safety plan for our school communities and hopefully to serve as a model for other districts, as we were the first district in Oregon to adopt a resolution on Dreamers. So thank you for your continued support, and again, we really reaffirm our commitment to all of our school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sparza Brown. Next, I'd like to ask Superintendent Guerrero to provide some words, updates, reports?
Sure. I also, first of all, want to start by, again, thanking Principal Curtis Wilson, student delegate Moses Tran, and the team for welcoming us here to your school this evening and letting us get out into the community. Thank you for that opportunity. Principal Wilson mentioned we had an opportunity to visit the impressive array of CTE programming and the spaces that support that kind of learning. Pretty impressive, and we have an exciting opportunity to think about what that looks like as we move forward in modernizing Benson, to bring that legacy to an even more modern age and continue to encourage some pretty innovative thinking. So thank you for that window of opportunity. So I do want to share some good news and some updates this evening. Graduation rates for school year 16, 17, they're going to be released later this week. I predict there's going to be some highlights in there for Portland Public Schools, high schools. Some of you were here or noticed, and since we're here at Benson, you know, I'll point out, one of the highlights from the 15, 16 was the astounding graduation rates here, higher than the district average and higher than the state here at Benson High. We know that there's an attribution to a really tight-knit staff that really engages and gets to know our students. They work hard. They don't let anybody fall through the cracks. It's an amazing sort of retention and engagement and spirit in supporting our students that makes the difference, and I think that's true in so many of our high schools. And of course, the uniqueness of the CTE program offerings that are provided here is an experience that so many of our students seek out, and it never hurts school spirit when you have a winning basketball team. Congrats to our girls. I know they've done really well in the PIL and have been representing really wonderfully. Even with the boys, just a few seasons ago, you know, the record wasn't what we would want it to be, and they've built up a strong program and are now sort of up in the upper rankings in the league as well. So congrats to Principal Wilson and everyone at Benson. It has a connection to the graduation rates, when you hear the stories and the experiences that our high schools are providing. Unfortunately, I can't release or talk about any actual numbers, because these graduation rates are embargoed, so I just wanted to mention to be on the lookout. Thursday morning, those numbers should be out, and I hope folks will take a look at those, and we'll certainly be posting a full report, high school by high school, as how we're doing, and of course comparatively to some of our neighboring school districts as well. More good news. I want to make sure everyone's aware that Portland Public Schools is the recipient of a $3.9 million grant from the U.S. Department of Education to support our multiple pathways to graduation program. This is a tribute to the team, Senior Director Karina Wolf, and a lot of students, families, and staff who participate in these programs. Different students choose different routes to getting across the stage. Over the years, Portland Public Schools has built a strong system of alternative programs in schools, such as Alliance Virtual Scholars, Metropolitan Learning Center, Portland Evening, Summer Scholars, Teen Parent Services, the Reconnection Center, and many others. It's an impressive array. They help serve the needs of our students regardless of how they learn. This is just one of 12 grants that was awarded by the Department of Education. It came after PPS submitted a proposal for... It came after PPS submitted a proposal for what it called the PREP Project, and that's an acronym for Personalized Relevant Engaged for Post-Secondary. PREP's goal is to help improve graduation rates for high-need students and get them into college programs. The program will serve historically underserved youth who might experience poverty and homelessness, as well as those involved in the foster care and juvenile justice systems. The grant will allow multiple pathways to hire social workers and alcohol and drug specialists. The program intends to use project-based learning, which is a teaching method by which students learn by working on a single question, problem, or challenge for an extended period of time, and will receive some improvements in social-emotional supports along the way. PREP is expected to serve 2,250 PPS students while creating a model that could be replicated elsewhere and ultimately serve many more students. Congrats to everyone who's involved in that project. I did want to mention and also acknowledge that we had a three-day weekend. Many of us had the opportunity to be out in the weekend celebrating Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. A number of us, Chair Brim Edwards and others, had the opportunity to be out in the community, participate in the annual scanner breakfast. Many of us moved on to the 33rd Annual Keep Alive the Dream Celebration. I just want to commend all of the students who performed and provided a lot of presentations by our students. I also want to recognize again Marshall Haskins, who also received a Lifetime Achievement Award for his years of work here at Portland Public Schools. Congratulations. And I want to end my report this evening, because I think it's important to acknowledge and recognize that members of the Pioneer community have continued to turn out the last several board meetings. And I think we owe it to you to make sure that there is an open dialogue and that we begin identifying some opportunities to talk about many of the details that I know are very important to you. And we'll just, as I conclude my comments, invite a few senior staff to actually come up and provide for the board's benefit and perhaps for the community, a chance to hear just a high-level synopsis of a few activities that are related to this program's relocation. So if I could invite a few of our staff to come up. Ms. Mary Pearson, Harry Stev. I don't know if I see our principal here this evening quite yet. If he could also come up. It takes a number of stakeholders to be a part of initial conversations and think about how do we create forums where we can have concerns and questions addressed. So I want to invite them to provide our board with a bit of an update about where we're at at this point.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Guerrero. We have been busy over the last couple, two, three weeks with several activities around a successful transition for the Pioneer program into two campuses. Probably the biggest news is we have now completed two rounds of interviews for candidates to be the middle school, high school principal, and we will be recommending two finalists to go forward for a final interview with our deputy superintendent, Dr. Yvonne Curtis. Once that position is hired, we plan to engage fully into more of a stakeholder process in involving the community and parents into that process and wanting to create sort of a parent advocacy, or not, a parent advisory group or a community advisory group that would help us on a variety of fronts, not only looking at facilities and helping us, you know, tour the site and talk about not only the things that have been identified that need to be updated now, but what do we really want a therapeutic program to look like? What might be some of our special asks around that? Another part of that would be just to continue to get input on also the therapeutic milieu and a variety of things in that regard. We have also worked with the Facilities Department to tour both Rice and Applegate, and so we have a preliminary list of updates that we'll be working on, and I'm going to let our principal, Mike LaFrenbrough, expand a little bit more on that. We're also engaging with a local expert. I'm not going to identify him yet, because we're still in conversations, but somebody who's very well-respected in our community but has a wealth of knowledge around therapeutic programs. And so we will be engaging with that person around some consultation, and hopefully will be a part of our advisory group. Let's see. I think those are the big highlights. I'm going to let Harry talk about a little bit.
Harry Stev, Director of Strategic Communications and Outreach. And so I want to just first state that I understand that there has been a gap in direct communications between the Central Office and the Pioneer community since those early, well, earlier meetings that we had with the staff and then with the families and staff. Part of the reason for that is that a lot of the activities that we just heard about have occurred just only in recent days, and so we're gathering that now and using that. Another reason is, you know, as was clear from those previous meetings and subsequent, emotions on this are high, and we felt that we needed a chance for the decision to settle in a little bit and for emotions to settle before we can seriously start doing the communication to a communication process and engagement process. But it is our intent to resume regular communications with the Pioneer community as part of a broader communication strategy for the entire middle school project, the opening two middle schools. We'll have a progress report ready to go in written form that will go directly to those families by, within a week. And as mentioned, part of that will be inviting members to become part of an advisory council. Once the other principal is on board, then you have the two principals who would be the likely, you know, the most likely leaders of the engagement process. They're the ones that are going to know the issues the best, know the staff the best, and are, you know, with our support, are really the best communicators for that. So our, I guess the last thing I'll say is that as part of this plan, we want to make sure that we're aligned with communications with the access community, so the two communities are getting information kind of along the same timelines and in same formats, and that that's also just going to be part of the overall communications plan for, communications updates for the whole middle school project.
Good evening. Mike LaFrenbrough, I'm the principal of the Pioneer program as it stands currently. What we're looking at is for next week, Ms. Pearson, the Senior Director of Student Services, will be out to meet with staff members, try to clear up remaining questions. I'm sure there will be more that information we'll have to seek after that. Human Resources will come out and meet with us at the next two staff meetings to talk about the transition with staff members, what that would look like for them and what their options are. As Harry said, the letter is going to come out next week, inviting parents to join our advisory committee, as well as give them an update where we are right now. Once we have that advisory committee formed with the new principal, which should be named, I would assume, next week or the week after, we will then begin a planning process and an updating process as we move along with each of them. Our plan is to meet at least monthly. We might need to meet more often as we start out. But we've toured the sites, we've looked at what needs to happen. And Rudy Rudolph is involved, and she's a meticulous notekeeper. I don't know if you know her. So that is the plan, as we have it right now.
Any questions, comments from the board? Director Bailey, did you want to say something?
Thanks for the update. I just want to say a couple of things. We've heard from Pioneer staff, they want to know where the Board of Directors is on this issue. So I want to read from a statement that I think expresses where we're coming from. First, the location and the configuration of a program, as opposed to a school, are the, it's up to the discretion of the superintendent. So we could just leave it at that. But we want to say unequivocally that we are in support of the superintendent's plan. We recognize that building logistics were, really pushed this decision to the forefront, but there's more to it than that. We believe that Pioneer students and families and staff, just like almost every aspect in this district, have not historically received the support they need from the district's board and central office. And within that context, staff have done their best to fashion the best possible program for their students who come from a diversity of academic and social and emotional needs. And the kids deserve better, and we can do better. But we have to work together to get there. So we greatly appreciate the feedback that we have been getting and continue to get from the Pioneer community. You've been bringing up extremely important points that we need to address. We, but we do believe that through our superintendent's collaborative leadership that Pioneer services can improve significantly next year. So we will hold ourselves accountable. We'll hold the superintendent and staff accountable for going forward, collaborating with the Pioneer community, and clearly the ball is in our court, as you've heard, to develop the program improvements and facilities that support the program. We hold ourselves accountable to have regular public reporting on the plan and progress in implementation. And that includes continuing to hear from the Pioneer community. We have earlier said that middle school implementation is, you know, one of our top priorities this year, and we're going to have that be a topic at every one of our board meetings to, so that there's communication about where we are in this process. I think we need to do that with Pioneer. It needs to be on our agenda every meeting. We hold ourselves accountable that program, the program will be better next year and better serve kids. And finally, it's our, it's our job to improve the coordination between Pioneer and neighborhood schools and ensure that Pioneer is part of a full continuum of special education services, and that schools are making appropriate referrals to the Pioneer program. So that's all on us, and we need you to work with us. But clearly, it's, right now, the ball's in our court to get that collaboration going. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bailey, and noted the request to keep this at the center of our agenda, either during the board's discussion and agenda items or potentially through the superintendent's report of developments as they are occurring. I think that's an excellent example, suggestion for us to take just over the next couple of months, as we're in the midst of a lot of transition for many students and staff all across the district. So thank you.
I just would like to add that with respect to those remarks, our board has not had any opportunity to have collective deliberations about this move, because as Director Bailey said, it is the prerogative of the superintendent to make decisions about program citing. So we have not had collective discussion about that. But I do want to reiterate that from a governance perspective, it is very much on us to hold the district accountable for making this a very successful transition. And we can do that through our, as we said, regular reporting in our board meetings and just really, you know, keeping students first in mind at all times and tracking the progress. But I did want to make clear that we have not deliberated as a board on this matter.
Great, but it will be, it will be on our agenda for the foreseeable future. Thank you, both of you. And thank you, Superintendent Guerrero, for all the updates and good news. So before we move to student and public comment, there's one more item that I just, I wanted to raise during the announcements that I'm just going to briefly discuss before we get to. This is actually part of the business agenda, but I just want to flag it. Because we have, last June, with the previous board, two resolutions were passed, Resolution 55, no, I'm sorry, Resolutions 5480 and Resolution 5481. One was about creating a comprehensive professional development plan, and the other was creating a comprehensive ESL plan. And there were deadlines, the board approved those resolutions. And of course, there's a new board, we now have a new superintendent. The deadlines were aggressive, and I think the first deadline was the first day that Superintendent Guerrero started in the district. And so, and then we've subsequently been in contract negotiations and haven't had the opportunity to have a full discussion about both of these plans. So in tonight's business agenda, there's a resolution which is going to essentially refer these two resolutions to the Teaching and Learning Committee. And there's a meeting on the 20th, I believe, of the Teaching and Learning Committee, but to basically re-refer these resolutions to the full board with some new deadlines now that we have a superintendent in place, the board, and we hopefully, fingers crossed, will shortly have a ratified agreement with the Portland Association of Teachers. So the board meeting at the end of February, we will reconsider that. But for those individuals who are wondering about those resolutions, we have not forgotten them, and we're going to recommit ourselves to the work, and it will be back before us. So that's that resolution that is Resolution 5568, which is in the business agenda this evening. So with that, it's time for our public comment, and I'd like to review our guidelines. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend our meeting and provide comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work. Board members and superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name during the first two minutes of the testimony. A green light will appear. When you have one minute, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, a red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. And we, when the buzzer sounds, we ask for you to conclude your comments. So with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Houston to call our first two public commentators.
Our first two?
Before I do that, I just want to say, people should feel free to connect with our board manager, Roseanne Powell, who's over here. If there's something specifically you want to follow up with the board on, or if you have any materials that you'd like to submit to the board for us to read. Thank you. Ms. Houston?
Our first two speakers are Henry Chase and Beth Blumklotz.
I can go first if you want, because I'm actually not a teacher. I signed up for the Transportation Department, the school bus drivers.
Did you, was yours, one of the names called?
Yes. So I'm just saying is that, so if you want to keep the flow with Pioneer, she announced me with Pioneer, as a teacher with Pioneer.
So do we have another, the next Pioneer speaker, if any?
Well, that's what I was saying, if you want me to go first, that way gets me out and then, okay.
Thank you. We'll have a common thread.
Right, just trying to keep the flow smooth. Okay.
Okay. I'm Beth Blumklotz. Last name is B-L-U-M-K-L-O-T-Z. Good evening. We're happy for the teachers that you have all been able to reach a tentative agreement. We hope you're equally committed to us as well, the special education school bus drivers. We transport our most fragile students emotionally, mentally, and physically. The last time I was before you, a few months ago, I attended- The last time I was before you, a few months ago, I attempted to open the lines of communication between you and the Transportation Department, specifically with us, the bus drivers. I shared some of our concerns. We were not here to yell and scream at you, we were not here to make you or try to make you look bad. However, it's been several months since I've spoken, two of my colleagues have spoken, and we've been present at these school board meetings, and it's been silent. We have not been contacted, we're not feeling heard, and our contract negotiations continue to reflect the same negative tone. It feels extremely disappointing that we may have to throw mud to be treated with respect, and that's not our goal. So, we have Type 10 drivers, which is a new name given, is basically for drivers, up to 10 students in a car or van. And on the school bus for special education, we often have up to the same amount of numbers. There have been many excuses of why we're hiring more and more, which is basically creating a second-class bus driver. There's no benefits for them, there's no protection, they need to be included in the union. They're paying union dues, and some are paying as full-time employees because of the amount of hours that they're driving. They're driving the same daily routes that we, as bus drivers, are driving. And under Portland Public Schools, even temporary employees receive benefits if they work enough hours, and our Type 10 drivers are doing that. So, the next issue, cars and vans are not as safe as buses, and I wonder how many parents really are understanding this. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration states that the school bus is the safest vehicle on the road. Your child is much safer taking a bus to and from school than traveling by car. Students are about 70 times more likely to get to school safely when taking a bus instead of traveling by car or van, because the school buses are the most regulated vehicles on the road. They're designed to be safer than passenger vehicles in preventing crashes and injuries. And then, in every state, there's laws to protect the buses and the students as well with the stop-arm laws from other motors to protect them. The design of the school bus is important because the flashing red light signals to other drivers, we have the stop arms, as we just mentioned, but they also have protective seating, high-crush standards if there's ever an accident, and rollover protection features. These cars and vans do not provide any of this protection that we are now using.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wrote to you all in December, but only received a generic response from one of you. So, here I am to tell you why it is important that the Pioneer program stays as it is. Since first grade, I have been in 12 different classes, three of which were at Pioneer. I am currently in eighth grade at Pioneer with Mr. Markort. And thanks to the support I have received from Pioneer, I just learned I have been accepted to Benson for next school year. In sixth grade, when I was at George Middle School, I spent a lot of time not in class and missed a lot of stuff. My sixth-grade year was so bad, my parents and I decided I would be homeschooled for seventh grade. When I was ready to go back to school, Pioneer was the place we all wanted me to go back to. I've heard one of the Pioneer middle school classes is going to go to a Gen Ed school, and I wanted to say that if the kids at Pioneer could be in a Gen Ed school, they would be. We all need to be at Pioneer because instead of being suspended for behavior related to our disabilities, we have therapists who can help us, a safe place to go calm down and participate in restorative justice. We actually shake hands, we actually apologize to the person, shake hands, and then everyone moves on. At Pioneer, this is normal for everyone. It's normal for everyone to have problems, and so the teachers help us take care of it. This didn't happen at other schools I went to. At Pioneer, the teachers are so much more flexible, and the staff does a good job of making sure I can stay in my classes, and so I can stay learning and keep my grades up. All students need lots of opportunities to practice what is hard for us, and Pioneer lets me do that. Every other school has instead taken away the opportunity for me to participate and the opportunity for me to practice. At Pioneer, all the students are on the same floor and in the same space and together. I have more friends at Pioneer because everyone there is on the same terms, but in a regular school, other kids think you are weird or trouble and don't want to be friends with you. We all know each other at Pioneer. It's not just about the students and the teachers, it's also about the building. It'd be bad to split up the program because we would have to split up our resources. Right now, depending on what is happening, the students and teachers move between the two buildings. So, if one group needs help, the other group is there. Or if one group needs more space, it is available because the building shares facilities. When I heard that the two schools you want to move Pioneer to, into, don't have kitchens or gyms or libraries, it sounded to me like you didn't put much effort into finding us a new school. I have looked at the map of vacant buildings and want to know why these two were chosen over the others and why Pioneer needs to be split up at all. Without Pioneer as it is now, we will be separated from our friends, and we won't be able to connect with the students around us, and we will be segregated into a place that's not suitable for us. Why would you do that to us? Why would you treat any other students better than us and put us in these two small spaces and take away the only thing at Portland Public Schools that has worked for most of us? Thank you.
You did a really nice job, and congratulations on your acceptance into Benson.
Our next two speakers are Laura Molten and Danielle Pacifico-Cogan.
My name is Danielle Pacifico-Cogan. I am the parent of a Pioneer student, and I am the Director of Communications and Community Engagement for Children's Institute. I would like to start with a poor football analogy, but it needs to be said, you don't start collaborating in the fourth quarter. As the parents of a child in the K-5 intensive skills classroom, the breakup of Pioneer will create a more restricted, more isolated, and less inclusive educational experience for my child and his classmates. The proposed new site, Applegate, has no cafeteria, no gym, no playground, and no library. Who in their right mind would think that placing children with disabilities in a facility with no basic amenities is justice, or equity, or fair education under the law? No one. This idea is asinine and demonstrates a lack of respect for the dignity of children with special needs. Imagine saying to someone in this community in 2018 that you're going to put black children in a school with no library, no cafeteria, and no gym. That, and that you would fix it later, and that you would address it later. Who would tolerate that? No one, because it's monstrous, and you know it's monstrous. And the way that the school board has responded to parents only via email and canned responses is a disaster, and is an embarrassment, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. Moving children with disabilities for the comfort of the access program is a repugnant exercise in discrimination, and it shows our children in our community that PPS regards children with disabilities as second-class citizens. PPS has an abysmal history and troubling present, providing equal education under the law for children with disabilities. A glaring example is a recently rebuilt Franklin High School, where children with the greatest needs have been placed in segregated environments under a library. Think about what you have just done. It didn't happen 20 years ago. This happened in the last two years. And now you're telling us you're going to move Pioneer, and we should trust you? I cannot trust PPS to do right by my child or his classmates, because PPS has been disingenuous throughout this entire process. You have made plans and not talked to parents. I have not received one piece of correspondence from the school district at all, and I am a parent. Pioneer teachers and staff have been ignored, and they have created a therapeutic educational community that needs resources and support so kids can have their needs addressed, and when ready, they can re-enter their neighborhood schools. This proposal does not consider what Mike and his team have done. This proposed move is putting undue stress on the children with the greatest needs, the teachers who do the hardest jobs in this district, and on the families that generally do not have the bandwidth to come down here, or to make calls, or to ask their friends in high places to do things for them. PPS should be ashamed of this blatant act of discrimination, but with a demonstrated track record of failing disabled students, failing black students, failing native students, failing working-class white students, there's not enough shame to go around this district, unfortunately. But I will close with this. This school district is charged with providing a high-quality public education to the 49,000 children in this community, not just the ones whose parents are of upper income, or the ones who should be in a TAG or gifted program. I'm a former TAGer myself. I get it, we're special, whatever, big deal, you get 1,600 on your SATs. That doesn't mean that you deserve a better public education than a disabled child, and we should not tolerate this.
Thank you.
Am I on? I'm sorry, I'm going to be the flow disruptor, because I'm not here for Pioneer, but I'm completely behind what everything you just said. My name is Laura Molten, and I want to begin by thanking you for the work you do for the district. I also want to take a minute to thank Rigler Elementary, which is our neighborhood school. We began our adventure there in 2009 in the Spanish immersion program, so we're going on a decade now. This year, my son will graduate Beaumont and head to Madison, my daughter will go to Beaumont as a sixth grader. Tonight, I have a request for you. Rigler is not a school with high test scores, it doesn't produce wonderful search results when entered into Google, we've never made more than about $3,000 at one of our PTA fundraisers, but I wouldn't trade our experience there, the incredible teachers and the community for anything. That said, we have had challenges and setbacks there over time. We've seen Rigler switched from K-8 to K-5. Why it took so long for Beaumont to be an option on the table for our kids to go is an uncomfortable conversation worth having. In 2014, we were assigned an unqualified principal that was gone by spring break. Last year, a 100% rent hike on an apartment building in our neighborhood resulted in the displacement of 26 of our students from Rigler. In September, about a month into school, parents at Rigler received news that the district was taking our principal, TJ Fuller, and installing him at Cesar Chavez. I recognize this was an emergency, but I don't believe this is the sort of action that would be taken at a school like Alameda, just down the hill from us, or at Ainsworth in southwest Portland. That's another uncomfortable conversation we could have. Now, this fall, if our English-speaking students move to Harvey Scott, our student numbers at Rigler will drop, and we'll be at risk of losing important staff and resources. The aforementioned changes have had a seriously destabilizing effect over time. I remember a conversation with a past PTA president at Rigler where we agreed it would be amazing to simply be focusing on fundraising and planning events and not going to another emergency meeting. Now comes my request. Jennifer Fontana has been a stellar replacement as interim principal. She's received overwhelming support from her community and from the staff at Rigler, yet we are still waiting for word on her status. Her new assistant principal, Mirna Munoz, is a terrific addition. Both women are fluent in Spanish, they hit the ground running, and have already done enormous good toward restoring order at our school after Principal Fuller's departure. We have 26 probationary teachers, and if we lose our AP, the principal will be alone next year in performing those observations and support, in addition to running the school. If the district is serious about a commitment to equity, here's one thing you can do: confirm Fontana as principal, assign Mirna Munoz as assistant, no matter what the student numbers at Rigler are next year. Improve recruitment of bilingual educators, and make it easier for immersion schools to hire qualified teachers. You took a principal from Rigler this fall to put out a fire burning at Cesar Chavez. Please allow us the basic foundation our school needs to be successful, so that Rigler doesn't become the next school on fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Shawlee McFarland and Jeannie Curtis.
I would like to present some Pioneer swag. Pioneer pride, Rapunzel. My name is Jeannie Curtis, C-U-R-T-I-S. I am the secretary of the Pioneer program, and I've been called the heart of the school, and my heart is being broken into two. Many of you have seen my face recently because of the proposal to divide and move the Pioneer program to fulfill your promise to the access community to keep their program together. Mr. Guerrero, when I first heard your name announced as our new superintendent, I was elated. I worked with a strong Hispanic community for several years, and your origin alone brought me hope that diversity in community might finally be on the forefront of this district. But alas, you disappoint me profoundly. Your bullying style of approach, from the way you treated administrative staff upon your arrival, to the closed doors, no research, no community input, program-changing decisions you unilaterally make, to the lies you've been publicly caught in, make me embarrassed that you are our superintendent. Your pride alone is what's driving this inequitable decision to dismantle the Pioneer program. You have heard from several hundred community members of the horrible ramifications of the Pioneer students will endure. You have served a petition signed by over 5,000 supporters to keep our program together, and it is financially irresponsible. Yet you still move forward. You continue to use your time and resources to push through with this, posting a principal position, sending facilities out to Pioneer for remodel planning to accommodate access as arrival, meeting with the access families to update the progress, yet you still don't make the Pioneer supporters or the public aware of these activities. I find that deplorable. It's obvious that student achievement numbers and privileged students are the only things that matter to you. Whether it's student population or achievement, you place numbers over student needs. Sorry, I lost my spot. It's true, Pioneer students won't increase test score numbers like access students will, but Pioneer students do have every right to be given an opportunity to do their best. Dividing and moving the Pioneer program into facilities that don't fit their needs will limit their abilities to do their best. That alone should have been enough reason for you not even to consider Pioneer as a new home for access. Access students want to stay together for a fluid curriculum. Pioneer students need to stay together to receive the level of continued educational services mandated on their IAPs. Wants versus needs, seems pretty clear you are letting access's wants trump Pioneer's needs. Per Resolution 5528, to better serve our students for talented and gifted services, PPS will, one, for the 2018-19 school year, relocate access academy to a bridge or permanent facility or facili-tees, that's more than one, with a capacity for about 350. Okay? The rest is, board, it's your job to represent all of the students of Portland, especially the unsupported. You are failing miserably, and the public is watching. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The time is always right to do what is right." That time is now. Please, all of you, do what is right. Admit this is wrong. Stop the proposed dismantling of our program. Go back to square one and find a new home for access. It's not too late to do the right thing.
Can you wrap up, please?
For the step up for the special education students of Portland, and be the district who places the underserved above the privileged. Thank you.
Thank you.
High School Board and Superintendent, my name is Shawlee Sawyer McFarland, and I'm the Chair of the Talented and Gifted Advisory Council, or TAGAC. Tonight, you will hear the district's Division 22 report to the community, which details whether or not PPS meets the Oregon Department of Education's regulations. For the second year in a row, the district has reported itself out of compliance with Regulation 1330, Programs and Services for Talented and Gifted Students. This regulation requires that Oregon school districts provide instruction to all tag-identified students at their assessed level and accelerated rate of learning. We thank the Tag Department for once again realistically assessing the state of PPS's services. It's hard to overstate the importance of truth if the district wants to build trust with the parent community, with any parent communities. We also thank the school board for instructing the district to develop a continuum of tag services in the revised middle school resolution you passed on November 14th. But the next step is for the district to take action. The Tag Department presented a plan for a continuum of tag services to the Teaching and Learning Committee last March. Since then, no progress has been made toward making any of the proposed services real. We still don't have a timeline for implementing middle school tag cohorts, we still see no resources to help schools with the technical difficulties of implementing the single-subject acceleration in math policy, we still don't have curriculum materials for teachers to use with their accelerated learners. We need to go beyond simply asking for plans and give the Tag Department what it needs to make them actually happen. Year after year, accelerated learners continue to move through PPS without ever receiving instruction at their rate and level. Put simply, Put simply, they are being denied the right to learn something new, to make academic growth each year. These students may disengage from their education, whether it's reading at the back of the room, failing to turn in homework, or failing to go to school. They also may act out getting in trouble in many, many different ways, or storing up their frustration until it explodes at school or at home. Tag services in this state aren't optional. It's time to implement clear, enforceable policies and practices around tag learning so that they're consistent and predictable at all of our schools. We need to budget for the structural supports teachers and principals need to make it happen. We need to ensure all new curriculum incorporates materials for accelerated learners so teachers aren't having to make it up, or just not doing it because they don't have the time to make it up. We need to make tag services a part of current middle school planning, and we need to provide teachers with professional development so that they know how to do it, so they actually have the tools they need. Perhaps most importantly, we need you to make it clear from the top that the days of PPS saying that there are tag services and then failing to produce them are over. That won't happen without-
Can you wrap up your comments, please? Thank you.
That won't happen without strong leadership. And Superintendent Guerrero, we look to you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody from the community who came tonight and spoke, especially to our student speaker. At this time, we are going to have a discussion about the Rigler immersion program and attendance area. The board's enrollment forecasting committee recently heard a proposal and is here to make a recommendation to the board. I'd like to ask the committee chair, Director Bailey, to introduce the item.
Can you, is it my cue to?
Yes. Director Bailey, the next item on the agenda is the Rigler immersion program that came from your committee. Would you like to introduce the item?
I was preoccupied with some other things today in terms of preparing for this, but yes, at our last meeting, sorry about that. Staring into space, good times. At our last meeting, the committee voted unanimously to support a plan to move the Rigler English-speaking program to Scott. At that time, the staff had not finalized the proposal, especially in terms of what to, whether the current fourth grade students should continue at Rigler for another year before going to middle school, considering that would, keeping that there would be a little more stability. Well, moving that would mean moving two years in a row to a new school. So I think it's time to hear from staff what the final proposal is. Come on up.
Director of Dual Language Programming, Michael Bacon.
Good evening. Michael Bacon, Director of Department of Dual Language. So the resolution you all have, so, but specifically, well, at this point, the resolution is to convert Rigler Elementary to Spanish DLI only and have the entire K through fourth grade, current K through fourth grade, moved to, next fall moved to Scott to be combined with their neighborhood English program, so that we have the potential of having a really robust, almost two classes per grade level all the way through K through fifth grade. So specific to, in the resolution, you will see that we did address or discuss the fourth grade class. There were some concerns raised by the community, parents specifically in the fourth grade. So the staff, and I will recognize that there were a number of people involved in this, Senior Director Oscar Gilson, our principals, Gina Ralletto at Scott, as well as Jennifer Fontana over at Rigler, that we worked, and Judy Brennan in enrollment and transfer. So as we looked at the data, and we actually went and specifically surveyed every single family that we could reach, and that data's in there as well, in that fourth grade class, and it was not a real clear decision that all of them wanted to move, or all of them wanted to stay at Rigler. In fact, there were a number that wanted to move to Scott, some of them being much closer to Scott, some of them having younger siblings that would actually move over to Scott. So actually having to split between Scott and Rigler didn't make, for them, didn't work very well at all. And as we sat down and looked through the pros and cons, and we looked about what we were trying to achieve, one, we were trying to achieve a very focused program at Rigler that it helps us have a Spanish DLI program where professional development and ability to have grade-level collaboration and all the things that really help for, be a really focused program. Having an English, small English class remain there might be very isolating for those students and also detract from our ability to have that focused program at Rigler. And you just heard comments about a smaller school and potential, you know, resources where that jeopardizes one of our objectives in the first place. The second thing was to look at a very small, you know, there's very small cohorts of kids in the English program at Rigler. Moving them over to Scott allowed us to avoid things like blended classrooms, which we currently have at Rigler, so that that disrupts our scope and sequence of curriculum and instruction. We don't have grade-level partner teachers that they can collaborate within the English program. So doing that over at Scott, moving those kids over there really helps us do that. When we look at, if we kept those fourth graders back for fifth grade, it potentially set us up for a very ugly situation at fifth grade where we have a very large class at Scott, in the low, just over in the 30, the low 30s, and a very small cohort of 11 or maybe 15 remaining at Rigler. And I have to credit Jennifer Fontana, really worked a lot with her staff, spent a lot of time talking to the fourth and fifth grade teachers, spent a lot of time talking to parents about this, and really thinking, really for the larger number of students, having all the students transition next year made sense for more kids in both programs, an ability to have an instructionally-focused program, Spanish DLI program at Rigler, as well as having a more balanced co-located program at Scott. So that's how we landed, and that's what's in the resolution. And we tried to really be thoughtful and lean into and listen carefully to those concerns raised by the parents that came forward. And I think ultimately, as did the board and the committee, that we were unanimous in our sort of support of moving forward with the full transition happening next fall. So most important, obviously, I think we have general consensus, even those who are concerned, that this is the right thing to do, but it's how well we make that transition which is really most important now. And so we're, already have dates set, and assuming that this passes, that we already set to work with parents and staff of both communities and administrators so that we have a carefully well-laid out transition plan to really bring those two communities together and hopefully make this a really positive, as positive as experience to mitigate or to minimize that another transition that could help negatively impact families and students as they do that. So that's the resolution at this point in time. So are there questions about that?
Do you want us to ask questions, or how do you want to run this discussion? Do you want us to get a motion on the table?
Yeah, let's go ahead and put the motion on the table.
So we have a, we do have a resolution 5566, which would change Rigler Elementary School to a neighborhood-based Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program-only school. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Director Bailey and seconded by Director Constan to adopt Resolution 5566. I'm going to ask, do we have any public comment? Okay, so now we've got a motion before us, and we can have a discussion.
I would just offer that this is something that we've been looking at for over a year now. It's been long in the making because we really recognize the inequities of having such an under-enrolled English-only, one classroom per grade program at Rigler. And I'm glad to see this solution come about. I think it's really exciting. There's a lot of demand for the DLI program. I think it's good for Scott, and I'm happy to see all this work come to fruition.
I think that this will move us, I mean, we need to be looking at, we've had issues with DLI programs, with co-located programs and single strands, as Dr. Constan, Director Constan was saying, of English-only strands. So perhaps, I mean, I'm, if we do this well, thinking of looking at how this might then be a model for moving some other programs forward. My only concern is, I think that there are some kids that are going to be in that unfortunate situation of having to do a couple of school moves, those fourth graders, and I don't have a better plan for that. I just realize how difficult that can be on kids. But yet, I think that this is a really good move to consolidate our resources for our language programs, our dual language programs. And I think that we need to continue to focus on, you know, what does, how can we strengthen curriculum and have the materials that will lead to, you know, strong academic outcomes and make sure that our teachers are highly prepared and such. So I'm anxious to work with you on some of that planning.
Very much agree, and thank you. I would look forward to it as well.
I do have a question, actually. So one of the recitals is that new students, or, excuse me, newly-enrolling students in grade one through five would have, or new students from the Rigler neighborhood would select enrollment in grades one through five, or basically, students would have the right to transfer into the English-only program at Scott. But is there any horizon for that enrollment transfer option, or is that ongoing? That if students are in the Rigler catchment and for some reason they do not, or they feel like they cannot be part of the DLI program, would they still have a guaranteed right of transfer to Scott, or no?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so that's, there's no, there's no time horizon on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure, maybe we should work on the wording or something, but, I mean, when they come in, they have a guaranteed space at, as a kindergartner, they can, anybody can enter the Spanish DLI program. It is their neighborhood program. In fact, we are removing that they don't go through the lottery, there is no lottery. That is where they enroll. If they choose that that's not what they want, they have a guaranteed space over in the new Scott-Rigler combined neighborhood, English neighborhood program.
And that's ongoing?
Yes.
Great, okay.
And of course, at first through fifth grade, if they're a Spanish native speaker, they automatically come in, or they come with Spanish proficiency. That is following our current district policy and bringing in late-entry students, so no difference there. But essentially, what we're doing is Scott becomes that, it's a wider neighborhood, basically. That's the whole neighborhood catchment is that. But their first option, if they're in that Rigler now, for now, will be Spanish DLI.
Got it.
I have a, I guess, a general question. This has been a long time coming, and I think this is kind of emblematic of some of the issues that we've seen pretty much across the district for co-located programs. And I would like, at some point, to see some plans around how we're going to deal with, how we're going to deal with co-location. I mean, is co-location a viable model? Do we need to rethink the DLI program, the program model? Do, you know, I just have a lot of questions about how this has been playing out over time across the district. And I'm a little concerned, frankly, that before we've sort of stabilized or consolidated where we are with our current DLI programs, we're now talking about creating a whole new DLI program that would be, I don't know, the first in the country? Is it?
No.
Okay. But it's, I've got some concerns about kind of how we're doing DLI across the district. So I would like to see, I mean, maybe this is probably something for the Teaching and Learning Committee.
Yeah, I think it is part of the work plan later in the spring.
Yeah, I believe you've asked for us to come back, and we're happy to set that date and come back. You know, this co-location issue, we've been in front of the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I, obviously, we don't need to keep admiring the problem. We need to have a plan about how do we address that. I think, and I would say that certainly, I know the principals and Oscar and others involved, and I talked about, this is an opportunity for us to kind of really learn how to do it and do it, and hopefully do it right, and then use that as as we move forward and we approach other situations. Obviously, what opened up this opportunity great for us is that, you know, Roseway Heights transitioning to being a middle school and the space created at Scott allowed us to do that. So I think we need to be more proactive moving forward with a plan and how we address that. And it can't happen just overnight, but we need to be really thoughtful and careful in how we do that, either balancing or moving towards DLI-only schools, or something in that nature.
And I think what was brought up by Director Moore is, and I've shared this with Superintendent, I think we can, I think we need to most clearly define what our models are and have that very clear on our, you know, on our website. And if we have, well, probably will be more than one model across the district, but then clearly articulated and kind of the target audiences and such. So I think revisiting us and teaching and learning to continue as we refine, really, our models in PPS would be crucial.
Love to have that opportunity.
Okay. Great, we'll do that. See you there.
So I have a couple of questions. What's the primary purpose of our DLI programs in PPS? They, some of the schools that originally were started, were started for one purpose, and I think they've started for other purposes. What's the sort of prevailing guiding philosophy of DLI? Who are we primarily trying to serve, and what are we offering?
Well, I think we would say that DLI is an educational program that is intended for, can be for all students, with a priority in our district certainly around, we know that it is an academic necessity in terms of closing the opportunity gap for our emergent bilingual children, but it's the win-win because we end up with both sets of learners being able to become bilingual, biliterate. We know the cross-cultural communication skills that come through with that, the academic achievement, the benefits, the research really clearly lays out, both academically, cognitively, economically, and so forth. So in terms of our work, we have certainly prioritized a population that we know, when we look at the long-term longitudinal research, that really has, it closes that opportunity gap, not only does that, but actually goes beyond that, and it's the only one that, in an educational program model, that does that. So as a priority, that's been where we have really put our effort in terms of expansion, trying to place programs where those students are. And I know that, I've been involved with it for some time, so I do know that, you know, historically, when we started our first program, that was not the driver. But I think as we've gone over time and seen the impact that a two-way immersion in particular can have for our historically underserved population, one that was under, has, continues in some ways to be underserved in our district, that that's a priority in our work.
But we also know that it provides- But we also know that it, it provides, you know, higher academic outcomes for not just children that come from dual-language homes after a certain period of time, and those tend to show up after about fifth grade. So this is something that you're in for, for the long term. I'm also grateful that it has developed to the, to the point that it has and how many more native speakers of a language, of our five target languages that we are capturing within our programs. Because it used to be, since I've trained bilingual teachers and special educators, not that many years ago, the saying in Portland was, you know, if you wanted your child to learn to speak, to read in Spanish, they had to be a native English speaker. So.
So shifting that narrative has been certainly a lot of our work, especially in the last four to five years. And I, and I, again, I would say it's the win-win. I, I think that, you know, we have benefits for all kids. And even the research now that's coming out is showing kids with learning disabilities, kids of poverty, even autism, it's showing benefits. North Carolina's done a huge massive study, millions of records in showing that. So I think that, and our own research here ran, you know, the benefits of, you know, by fifth grade, we're seeing seven months of advancement in reading in English for kids that are in. And when we do comparison groups, actual apples-to-apples comparison, and by, you know, eighth grade, we're seeing almost a full academic year benefit. So I think we know the power of the model, we know that it's not perfect, and there's lots of things we have to continue to work on, and I agree with Julie on that. But that's how we have really focused our work. There are other benefits too, and linguistic and cultural identity, reduction of dropout rates, different things that we know with our linguistically and culturally and racially diverse populations. And, you know, Arabic, believe it or not, has moved into number four as the home language in Portland. It is the fastest home language growth in the United States. I don't believe that's kind of unknown out there in the world. You know, the Translation Interpretation Services told me that they've pulled their data and said that, you know, that's a language they need to start supporting through their, as one of the major languages. So, you know, I know that that brings concerns and I know expansion always brings concerns. On the other hand, I'm concerned about equity of access to a program that really serves population that really needs that, often marginalized populations.
So I asked the question because when I look across the district, I see that we don't have a consistent standard of why we are developing and supporting programs. And I think we need to be really thoughtful about that of, so just for example, I'm looking at the, the numbers and knowing that there are probably many native Spanish-speaking families who would want to have a child in a, at a program like Rigler, where the reality is like the kindergarten, this year, the can, looks like the kindergarten numbers, there's 21 Spanish speakers and then 42 English and other language speakers. That, just of how we are, when we support these programs or set them up to have some sort of consistency, so that the benefits accrue to the students who meet, would benefit from it most.
We're prioritizing, yeah.
Pardon?
That we're prioritizing.
Yes. And then, so, and I know there is a real, across the district, a real difference among the DLI programs on the amount of native speakers versus non-native speakers and how you access the program.
Sure.
So I had a question about, I think you probably made this chart, so I want, wanted to ask about this chart, it's on page two that was shared and I just.
In the technical analysis part?
Pardon?
In the technical analysis part?
It's the comparison of school demographics.
Mm-hmm.
And I may be reading it wrong, but do you, it doesn't appear to have the Rigler, well, it has the Rigler NB, is that neighborhood-based?
I'm sorry, I'm going to pull it up here. What page was it on?
It's, it's page two, but I think unfortunately, there's several documents that have.
It's a single Rigler enrollment analysis.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm, can you say your question again, please?
So I'm looking at the different categories and I see a Rigler NB English program. Is that neighborhood-based? Is that what NB stands for?
Right, neighborhood-based.
So I'm wondering, there's not a regulars Spanish DLI, there's no, there's no.
Oh, it's not broken out, disaggregated between the, the Spanish program versus the non, or the neighborhood program? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just curious, it appears to be missing.
I'm sorry, say, say your question again.
Right, so you have a, a, there's a chart here that compares the Rigler English program to other neighborhood-based programs, but it doesn't have, just so we could see the comparative.
With the Spanish DLI program? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So for example, how many special ed students are there in the Spanish DLI program? What percent? And then I'm interested in also the.
So I don't have that data on me, but, you know, we could certainly bring that. This was done, the reason why we did this was to look, if we're going to move a group of students, we were looking at the students that we were potentially, and what, how that compared to the home that they would potentially land in. And that's why that, that was done in that way.
It would have maybe been helpful to have like.
Sure.
It's, where it's going from.
Sure.
And for Scott as well, because Scott is also co-located.
It does have Scott.
It does have Scott altogether.
It's not broken out.
It is altogether.
But it doesn't have, doesn't have it broken out by program.
It doesn't have it broken out by the neighborhood versus, yeah. So we could do that analysis, but that was.
Okay. Because this, I mean, if I can just jump in.
Sure.
I mean, this is a big problem because in co-located schools, schools with co-located programs, it is rare to see the numbers broken out by program. But in most schools, they are essentially two different schools inhabiting the same space. And there's, there's typically, I think, very little interaction between the programs. And I think also typically, as I understand it, there's a pretty significant difference in the demographic makeup of the students in the neighborhood program as opposed to the DLI program. I think we need to see those numbers broken out on a regular basis. And it, I mean, it's got huge implications for things like Title I status and, and lunch, free lunch programs.
Right.
Because we tend to, we tend to make those designations based on the whole school population.
Right.
Where you may have an enormous percentage of students in the neighborhood, in the English-only neighborhood program, who would qualify for free and reduced lunch. But they're kind of overpowered by the demographics of the DLI program, which tend to have many fewer kids who would qualify for free and reduced lunch. So I'd like to start seeing those numbers broken out.
Right, and they're going to look different for school to school, for sure. But yes, yeah.
I would echo that, that that's a really significant issue because we actually have no flexibility in those designations. So Beach is a good example of that with their Title I status and their, their DLI program. So I agree that that's something we need to address.
So, I mean, I, I think, well, I mean, that's part of the discussion as to, you know, what, what would it look like then if we moved to more DLI schools, you know, versus the co-located programs?
Right, co-location.
Right.
So I, I have a concern when I look at this, it's a pretty large geographic map. And I should, I should disclose that I had three kids who went through PPS and I had two who went all the way through an immersion program and one did not. And when I look at this really large geographic area, which is now the new combined Rigler-Scott.
Are you looking at the dot gra?
Well, I'm looking at the, the enrollment boundaries. So, you know, theoretically, what we're doing tonight would be creating sort of a super boundary. And if you're in that super boundary, you, and you're, say, have a kindergartner, you, correct me if I'm wrong, if we vote, make this vote tonight, if you have a kindergarten in this su- big super block, there'll be five classrooms of Spanish instruction and two classrooms of English.
Correct. Other than, you know, if you live in the Rick, the current Rigler neighborhood, you, your Spanish DLI option is your, is that one, not both, but yeah.
If, if, for whatever reason, so let's, let's move to second grade. So you move into the Rigler neighborhood with a second grader and a third grader. There's one place, you essentially will have, there's two, two classrooms out of seven that you can go to in one school.
Correct.
In this bigger super block. So I guess, when I look at immersion, I think there's a lot of benefits to it, but there's also not every child is ready or it's the right program for them. If they, they're from a family that's moved, I mean, certainly you just can't in third grade move into a.
Unless they're a Spanish speaker or they've been in a Spanish program.
Right. So I'm concerned that we've really restricted the, the options. So it's, if you're, if you're, if your family moves a lot because of their housing situation, you move into that neighborhood, you'll have really sort of one choice. And I'm concerned about the flexibility of, like, say, we're super successful and we get, you know, a lot more students, there's not going, there's not another English classroom to put them in if they come in at the middle grades. So when I look at this, I think we're, we potentially are looking at, well, this is, it's sort of convenient, we can move, the numbers work this year, but for long-term, I think that we haven't thought strategically about where do we want, where do we want these programs? Who do we want to focus on having the ability to access them and benefit from them? And then for those students where it's not the right placement or their families move, that they have an equal set of options. And I think we're sort of getting into a place, and I had a conversation earlier tonight with Director Bailey, where the sort of the math works this year, but may or may not work in future years. And I think not give students, again, especially with students from transient families, a lot of options and perhaps putting them all into, into the same set of classrooms. So I, I probably, most likely, am going to be a no on this, not because I don't support dual immersion, I think it has lots of benefits. I just think we, we need, we should have a bigger strategy for how we're placing these schools, what types of supports we're giving students who aren't in these programs.
I guess I'll just say that having been on this board now for two and a half years and, you know, being a community member longer, looking particularly at the achievement of kids of color, kids with disabilities and kids flow SES, that I, I think that our co-located programs, those single-strand English-only programs have been really inequitable. And I think that we've looked for not, I mean, this hasn't been a snap decision to look at this model. I mean, it's been years. I think that we've had the ongoing discussions and plans for this to happen. And again, I'm, I'm going to be in agreement, I'm going to be a yes vote on it, again, because I don't think that we can continue to have single-strand programs. And I think that we need to, if we're committed to dual language, that we need to have model schools where we are putting adequate resources and building those. I mean, it's not that and they'll come, but I think that we then work to, to bring in the families that, that can best be served there. But again, I think, I think it's finally, we're moving to a place where we are looking at having the resources to boost our DLI programs. I can't say that they've all been the strongest programs now, and I think that we need some movement to change that.
I think that, I'm sorry.
No, I was just.
Mr. Bacon.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think that since this will be our only, you know, school that is entirely DLI.
There is one other program, the Japanese program is, as well.
That's right, that's right. Oliver Richmond. We need to do a good job of communicating, proactively communicating with the community what the situation is there, because we do know that there's a lot of unmet need for both native Spanish speakers and others interested in Spanish to be in one of these programs. So when people are making decisions about moving and all that, we need to communicate with the community about what a big change this is, because people are not going to assume that when they move into a neighborhood or when they're making those choices. So I hope that there is some kind of attendant plan to really make sure that people are aware of a pretty significant shift. But I, I support it because we haven't served these students well enough historically and we know there's a lot of unmet need.
Director Anthony?
All right, just a couple of comments. I'm going to be voting against this because I am completely unpersuaded about what we should be doing with the fourth-grade students at Rigler. I am very much afraid that we are following the district's longstanding pattern of re-traumatizing already deeply traumatized children. Also, I would say that this has been discussed in my hearing for at least six years, and I'm very unhappy that there is no transition plan. I think that there very much needs to be one before we vote on it. Thank you.
Paul, could, yeah, could you repeat your last sentence? We couldn't.
It's hard to hear.
Oh, yes, it is. And could I just say on behalf of the Benson community that we are looking forward very much to having the acoustics in this room fixed? I think we very much need to have a transition plan for moving Rigler to Scott, and I think we need to have that before we vote on it.
Anyone else?
Do you have any comments, Mike? Couple of things. Are there Spanish-speaking students at Scott who want to but cannot get into the DLI program because there's not enough room?
No. Gina's indicating no.
No, okay. And secondly, the strength of our programs depends a lot on the quality of the leadership. We have had, as reported, you know, we've had huge turnover at Rigler and Scott, at Lent, at Chavez, at a number of our Title I schools. So I think that's, we need to address that in order for our kids to get the benefits that are potentially there for DLI programs. And finally, I want to acknowledge some of the criticisms of this move is that the kids that were shifting low-income kids of color, already a high transitory population that were shifting from Rigler to Scott, I don't see what else to do because that single-strand program has been failing for so long. And I wish we had started this sooner and could have had a smoother transition, but we gotta, we gotta do this.
Yeah, at the end of the day, when I look at three and 13 and 11 kids, and our ability to serve is incredibly hampered. I think that this is, and I understand there's a lot more that we can and should be doing, but I think this is a step in the right direction.
Anyone else? So just to make clear, I support Rigler as a full DLI program. I just believe that the district has not presented either a transition plan or be thoughtful and strategic about how that larger neighborhood, including the Scott students, are going to be effectively served. And I think it's going, Rigler and Scott are both going to require a high level of, of supports. And, and I think we should put a placeholder that if the demographics of that neighborhood changes or we have an unexpected spike, that the sort of permanence of decisions on any of the programs. on any of the programs might need to be changed, because we're committing a lot, um, we're making a bet on a particular pattern of choice, um, of, of parents, and that may change.
Well, again, the whole context here is redoing the East Side.
Is.
Um, redoing the East Side boundaries thoughtfully, um, doing the focus option analysis that we've been talking about for a decade almost, uh, which includes, uh, the DLI, you know, what, what's our program plan here. Um, we still have a lot of work to do, and that's what we need to do to get us to that strategic point of view that you're talking about. So I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
No, I think we're in an agreement, we're just arriving at a different place.
Tac- tactically, right now, we're in a different place.
Okay. Any other discussion, Director Rosen?
Yeah, I would only add, not to get into all the research and the studies that have happened around the country, I, I think most educators would agree that a full dual immersion program at a site, it permits it, uh, to thrive, to meet many of the objectives that I think Director Bacon opened with. Um, the challenge here is that, um, where do they fit in the broader school portfolio in PPS? And we haven't really discussed, um, how we make those options available to families to make informed choices with. Yes, there are staffing constraints, curriculum constraints, fidelity to language of instruction, et cetera, we could go down the list on those curricula and instruction pieces, but fundamentally, if we want to offer program options, they have to sit within a, a broader master plan, um, because when you see immersion attempted as a single strand, you'll inevitably come up with some of the issues that we're facing now. And I think you're seeing the numbers, and families are gravitating and voting with their feet now. Um, so even if we leave it, there's going to be three kids in the kindergarten, as projected. Um, and the time crunch here is that we're running up against the enrollment process as well. So, um, I think you've raised some valid questions around the upper grade students, and I think there's been some surveying of those families to try to, um, meet their wishes, but I think the question that I heard is, what does that mean for the future neighborhood and what happens? And I think those are very reasonable to be asking, and right now, we have no way to predict that. Um, so we're, we're trying to meet a, a current need, because I do agree, it's, it's the bigger conversation that we need to have about not just the East Side, but the entire district's portfolio of schools and programs, that in many ways are challenged because we have a neighborhood attendance area, um, and, and, and other variables, uh, that we have to consider. So, um, I think, uh, thank you, Director Bacon, you've been very thorough in, in your memos and your informational reports to the board, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough decision here. Um, I think our principals and our senior director have put a lot of thought into how can we serve the families that are in front of us as effectively as we can, and I would agree, um, we should have a bigger conversation about our language programming and, you know, study how, the efficacy of those, and where, what is the next generation of work that we need to do, uh, within them. Um, they're, they're the same issues that, that most districts, uh, who are attempting to do language programs well, have to, have to continually confront and engage in continuous improvement about, so, um, I'll leave it there.
And Director Bacon, I apologize for totally fumbling the introduction.
Great, well, I think we're ready to vote. Um, I would like, by the way, that data, um, just sometime in the future on the, the programs decided are ready.
On the disaggregated around the different demographic issue.
Thanks. Um, so the, the board will now vote on Resolution 5566. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
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 I'm sorry, but it's the bad acoustics, was it just Director Anthony and I?
Good.
Thanks.
Hi, Booney.
Okay. Um, Student Rep Tran?
Yes.
Resolution 5566 is approved by a vote of four to three, with Student Representative Tran voting yes.
And, and I, I think, uh, what we heard is that we'd love to hear about, uh, the transition plan and how it's being implemented in the county.
And that's part of the resolution is to come back with, yeah.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite, uh, Yvonne Curtis, the Deputy Superintendent, to, um, present us with the, uh, Division 22 report, and maybe you could start with just a primer for those people who aren't steeped in, um, school, uh, terminology, what, what the report is and, uh, why we submit it to the state. Okay?
Next meeting.
Of course.
Well, I think this is, uh, the coming out party for our Deputy Superintendent for Instructional School Communities, Dr. Yvonne Curtis, so I think the board's aware, this is an annual exercise, Division 22. Um, some of that compliance reporting has shifted, uh, a little bit in recent years, which Dr. Curtis can elaborate on if you have any questions, but I think, uh, we have an obligation to report to, to the board each year how we're doing along these areas. Dr. Curtis?
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero and board members. Um, so just a little history, there was, so Division 22 basically covers all of the core of what schools are created and, um, basically commissioned to do in the state. It used to be a very, very cumbersome process, and when, um, all of the school districts during the Great Recession went through these huge reductions in staff, and were still trying to push out new programs like full-day kindergarten and those kinds of things, one of the asks we had of the legislature as superintendents, OSBA, COSA, everybody worked together on it, was to say to the legislators, please minimize the reporting responsibilities, because many of us had all, uh, reduced staff at the district level in order to protect as many teachers as we could and keep them in the classroom. This was across the state. So there was a whole committee to look at what reports really needed to be extensive, and which ones could they, um, tailor down. They periodically changed what they want us to report. Last year and this year, they asked us to complete this checklist that's in front of you, and I gave you a paper copy. Evidently, there was something going on with our technology that you didn't get one with the boxes checked. So our obligation, uh, and I do see that I have the wrong date there in the first sentence where I mentioned the summary, that should say February first, last year's date was January 15, so I apologize for missing that, uh, in my editing. So our responsibility is to report to you where we are not in compliance, and then both the minutes and the board agenda get turned into the state along with the checklist. The summary is just providing a short version of what's attached on the back with a little more explanation for each of the areas we're not in compliance. I would, thought I would just highlight those, not read the whole, uh, summary to you. So for the 2017-18 school year, PPS is in compliance with all Oregon Division 22 administrative rules except for six. Two of them, staff have done some work on, and I'm just learning about some of this work, but the report is that, uh, prevention, education programs in drugs and alcohol, and human sexuality education, there has been work on putting together that curriculum, and it will be implemented in the fall, so next year we'll be in compliance with that one. The media programs and the instructional materials adoption, and the, uh, talented and gifted compliance requiring us to address rate and level, all are tied to having, um, an identified set of core standards, the guaranteed and viable curriculum, which, you know, we're in the process of identifying. In some areas, we will have clarified that by July 2018, but to be completely, um, to complete every grade level in every content will take us through to June 2019 to complete all the content areas. Once that work is done, then we go through the process of identifying what are the instructional materials we need that are aligned with those instructional programs according to the scope and sequence. You can't do it in reverse, or you end up with kind of where we are. Sets of materials, there, there's just not system coherence around the instructional core. It's a huge, huge piece of work to take on, and you have to go intentionally through each step to make sure that students actually all get an equitable education that is rigorous, engaging, reaches those high levels, and prepares every student so they're ready for their choices for college and careers. So we have a lot of work to do. I'm super excited to be here to do this in the role where I can really focus, but right now, we're just kind of playing a little catch-up and trying to learn what's in play. So I'm taking lots of notes, both here and in every presentation, to help engage with you and guide those conversations so that we're providing you with what you need, but so that you have confidence that what we're offering all of our students is what they need to be well-prepared. That's a long comment for Division 22, but, um, I just want you to know, having come from several other districts in the state, this, in this state, almost every school district is always out of compliance with the instructional materials. And part of that is our funding challenge and the fact that in our state, we don't have a requirement for a certain part of our budget to go to instructional materials, like other states do. So it's always left to the discretion, which includes community. So then we kind of have to decide where the dollars go. That's what's happened for the unraveling, so it's not just in Portland public schools, it's been in many school districts. So we want you to know we're going to fix that, but it's, it's a journey, and it will require some very, uh, focused commitments to dollars to support everything that's needed, because once you have the materials and once we're clear about the curriculum, we have to do a lot of professional development. So more to come. But for tonight, uh, you don't have to vote, it's just a report so that it can be in our minutes. But I can take questions.
Director Bailey?
Uh, so we're looking at June 2019 to complete the scope and sequence.
For every single content area, every single grade level.
Um, and then we can start some of the adoption before that date, some of the adoption would be after that date.
So some of the scope and sequence will be completed by June.
Yeah.
And so we'll start to lay out, what does that whole calendar look like? It will be over several years, we'll look at every content area, we'll determine what is the professional development, what do we need to do about materials adoptions? So as soon as we have that scope and sequence, we will be developing that long-term plan.
Okay.
So we can tell you how that will roll out. Right now, I haven't even had a chance to see how far we've gotten.
Come on, you've been here a couple of weeks now.
This is my sixteenth day.
Sixteen days?
Yeah, this is my fourth week, actually, we just haven't had full weeks.
Around here, we call you old time.
Pardon me?
It's interesting how accurate people are, very meticulous about the number of days, it's like you're checking them off.
Well, each day, we feel a little more confident that we know what our work is. No, I think it was honest.
Another question around our human sexuality curriculum. California has adopted, uh, curriculum, I think is ahead of everybody else, well, depending on how you define ahead. Um, it's sort of based on a lot of the discussion going on now around harassment and sexuality, and the idea that, uh, from the male side is you don't proceed unless you get an enthusiastic yes. Um, and around that, there's, you know, curriculum that I believe has been developed around both the, how do you talk about it, physiology, a whole lot around that. Are we anywhere close to that?
You know, I haven't had any in-depth conversations with staff about that, so I don't even know if we.
I can say that we have had some presentations from, um, Jenny Withicam, the, the PE TOSA is leading a lot of this work, and we, it is, um, some really groundbreaking work that addresses a lot of mental health issues, um, addresses consent issues, um, I forget exactly what the prompt was that, um, that, for which we had this pretty comprehensive presentation about the whole rollout that will come out next week on this, um, health education and sexuality, but I thought it was impressive and comprehensive, and that her leadership was excellent.
Great, thank you.
Uh, two quick comments. One, thank you very much for the explanation of the curriculum adoption, I do really appreciate that. And then on the human sexuality issue, the problem that I hear over and over again from our school counselors is that too much is given to young and not enough later. It's given before children have questions, and unless they have an established relationship with a counselor, they have nowhere to go when they do have questions.
Any other comments or questions? Director Moore?
Um, I just want to acknowledge that, um, you and Superintendent Guerrero and others are walking into a situation where I think we are, um, I don't know how we compare with other districts, but I'm guessing we're a little further behind than most in some of the basics, like scope and sequence. Um, and I think, I, I think it just bears acknowledging out loud that we are where we are, um, we have new district leadership, and, um, we're going to be, we're going to be filling in the gaps, and we're, everybody's working at, um, double speed, um, so I, I appreciate your, you're taking this on, and, um, I'm hoping that, uh, within the next six months or so, we'll start to see some, some real, um, tangible fruits of all the, all the work that everybody is doing in the central office, and, uh, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
So just to build on that, um, because I think easily the story could tomorrow could be, PPS is out of compliance in six major areas. And I, just to reemphasize the other board members, I think, um, our instructional team led, starting with the superintendent, our deputy superintendent, uh, we now have you on board, so, um, I, I think we should acknowledge that this, this is a historical document, this is a reflection of, like, what's happened up till today, um, and that, um, I would hope that next year at this time, um, for, it looks like for sure we'll have three of the six are on track to for sure be taken care of, uh, the prevention, education programs in drugs and alcohol, human sexuality, and the complaint procedures. Um, but that leaves three other ones, and the other three are frankly, you know, pretty huge bodies of work, and, um, I would hope that, um, maybe, um, Director Sparza-Brown and the Teaching and Learning Committee, that we have, get sort of, some sort of update, I'm just afraid of, you know, I'm looking through the here, the ESL, you know, PPS was granted an adoption waiver in 2014, we're requesting another extension, that we have a really clear set of, you know, timeline with gates and dates, um, on how we're going to get this back on track, and I recognize it's, it's huge work, um, but it, uh, it would be, I think, a great, um, foundation for our kids to have this sort of, be, it be in the rearview mirror, um, these issues versus over and over again, and, um, I guess I just can't leave without making a comment about the talented and gifted, um, students and services they, they receive, because, um, this hasn't changed since the fifteen years ago when I was on the board the first time, and I, I'm not sure if we've ever been in compliance. Um, so, you know, making, making progress on that front, and again, um, perhaps with, um, the work that's going to happen around access and the sort of full of array of services will, um, help us there, but, um, I, I would hope that next year, we're, we're all, um, we're, we're counting our ten years in, um, in years, um, not in, not in, not in days or weeks, and that we've made significant progress.
So I would be remiss if I didn't thank, uh, our retired principal, Rudy Rudolph. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank our retired principal, Rudy Rudolph, for her coordination and all of our department heads who contributed to substantiating a yes or no here. I know you see a checklist, but there's actually a lot of documentation that comes with each and every one of these line items. I think folks have noted the academic areas. We're certainly, we're doubling down. And we've already reorganized our focus centrally to build out that scope and sequence, which is an audacious goal to do in the next six to nine months, PK 12, in the way that it takes most districts two or three years. But we have 150 teachers on board who are helping with that task, which I think is massive and impressive. And then there's a lot of items on here we didn't speak about tonight that also fall in the operational arena. And I just want to thank folks for keeping up the work there and make sure we're meeting standard and compliant and the work is proceeding there. But I hope that a year from now, when we talk about Division 22 again, even though this is just a compliance issue, that we can recognize we've made a lot of growth in many of these areas.
Thank you very much. We look forward to next year's report.
Thank you.
All right, at this point in the meeting, we are going to have committee reports. And I'm just going to maybe start with Director Rosen. Is your committee met?
So the Health, Safety, and Accessibility Committee met in, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. I was going to say early January, so it was a couple of weeks ago. We talked about three issues essentially. First, we got an update on the lead-in water situation. So as of today, 15 of 90 schools are back online. Kids are drinking water, so we have 75 to go. And although we're, I think, behind where we would have liked to have been when we were first starting out, the process is accelerating. So I think we're in a good place to finish up all the schools by the end of the year or before school starts next year. The second thing is, we got a quick update on other safety issues like lead paint, asbestos, and fire protection. The big news around this topic is that at our meeting in February, we'll have a draft Health and Safety and Accessibility Plan that covers all of the health, safety, and accessibility issues that we're dealing with and a timeline for how we're going to address the concerns. This plan was due in December, so I'm anxious to see it in February. Then two other things quickly. Next month, we should be meeting with the Bond Stakeholder Advisory Committee to talk to them about all these issues since the health, safety, and accessibility work is bond-funded. We'll be going back to them and showing them the draft plan. And then finally, we saw a draft ADA Transition Plan in the meeting. And so we're starting that discussion. And that, too, will go before the Bond Stakeholder Advisory Committee. That's it.
So I think, Director Bailey, your committee's already, the work product of your committee, unless you have something else you-
Right, yes. There is one other item that we voted on in the committee, which I wasn't sure, I thought it was going to be on our agenda tonight, but apparently it'll be on our next one. And that's to, we voted 3-0 to recommend undoing the boundary change from Alameda to Rose City Park because it involved a small number of kids. And Rose City Park, in our current projections, will be quite full. It's first year, and so it doesn't need that. Next meeting.
Director Sparza-Brown, has the Teaching and Learning Committee met?
Does it know?
I couldn't hear. Echoing. Yes, teaching and learning?
Yes.
Okay, so we met on January 17. There were three items on our agenda. We talked about middle school community engagement. There was lots of discussion and reports of the large amount of outreach that both new planning principals for two middle schools that will be opening, the outreach that they've done to community agencies and parent community. So stuff is really happening. They're going full bore there, and that was exciting to hear. Then we had a discussion around the curriculum for the middle schools that will be opening, but also addressed the broader curriculum of middle school math, which has been problematic in terms of equity of offerings. And so the timeline will be that we'll start revisiting kind of that scope and sequence, I believe, next year. So by academic year 2019, we should be, have robust math offerings for all middle schoolers. So, I mean, that's a focus that'll take some time for us to get there, but we realize that that's an area that we need to address. And the third item was summer programs, which has also been somewhat problematic. So we were given kind of a matrix of where we've identified all of the current summer offerings and the agencies that sponsor the offerings, the target students, which I don't think existed before. So it was really helpful to have just kind of tracking of what's available. And in particular, you know, who the target audiences for those programs are. And it is evident that we need to look at summer programming in terms of what the district can offer that will support students that need academic support during the summer. Because that's really a missing key. There's very little of that. There are some for migrant students, some for specific populations, but not in general. So that is an ongoing, we'll come back and revisit that. We're asking them to gather more information in terms of the kinds of financial commitments that, programs that we offer in the summer, that we don't, that are supported through other agencies. So what's the partnerships look like? So that we identify kind of where we're at financially and what will the needs be going forward. So the next meeting will be February 20. Thanks.
Should student rep report?
Yes.
I chaired the meeting.
After not meeting for a while due to winter break and, you know, being in December and everything, Super SAC met about two weeks ago. And next Tuesday, January 30, Super SAC will be meeting with all the ASB student body presidents from each district high school, including MLC, for the very first time ever, just to build a relationship between the district, student-wise, and the nine district high schools, including MLC. So that as we're, Super SAC is developing a way and a model to bring issues from the school to the district, and how we want to do that, and what means of communications and what channels of communications. Do we want to take in order to bring school problems to the district and have two or three students come to each board meeting and provide testimony, rather than maybe once a month or once every other month? Super SAC has also been working on their 2018, 2019 work plan, just so that we have a work plan and we stay on track to, on our work and not fall behind like in previous years. We've already started our recruitment for next year's Super SAC Council so that they can start off in-depth planning of what they want to do and their projects in the summer and implement those by the school year. And then the Multnomah Youth Commission has reached out to us on their proposal for starting later school times. So hopefully, in the near future, we'll be able to set up a meeting with them and hear their proposal. And from there, the council will vote, and we'll see where things go.
Thank you. I had a report from last board meeting. I was only at the board meeting for a portion of it, so I didn't have a chance to report. The Special Committee on Board Policy and Governance had a meeting. It had four topics that we discussed. Nepotism policy, which the district is lacking. So we had a sort of preliminary discussion about what direction we wanted to head with that policy. Actually, it's probably going to be more of a conflict of interest with nepotism policy sort of under that. And then we had a discussion about the school facility and school-related naming policies. We have an active complaint from the Franklin community around the Quaker name. And so in addition to looking at what the district's approach should be to that complaint, we're also taking, looking at a larger look at the place names for various facilities and other related items, things in our district and what they're named after. We also had a further discussion about the complaint policy, which is one of the items that was in the Division 22 report that we're on track to modify the policy. So it's compliance with state law. And then we also had an update on the public records policy. And I guess one last thing for the rest of the board. We're currently looking for a time for a longer work session. And the planning that's going to occur around that is really integrating the committee work plans and the sort of superintendent and staff's work plans where there's an alignment or overlap so that we have a discussion draft document that we'll bring to the full board when we have this extended work session so we can get a roadmap for the rest of the year, prioritize. What are we going to commit to try and do this year? And then what we will put into sort of next year's work plan. And we're working with the superintendent's new chief of staff on that. Do you have, FAO committee have any?
We had a meeting of the Finance, Audit, and Operations Committee scheduled, but we canceled because staff told us, we had a couple of items on the agenda that staff said they needed more time. So our next meeting is the 30th, so January 30. And if I can just add, it appears Measure 101 passed. So that's one whole body of work that we're not going to have to do, thankfully. So once again, thank you to the voters who passed this critically important measure. Thank you.
Director Anthony, the Charter Committee meet?
The Charter Committee has not met. But I should let you know that the Oregon School Boards Association's Board and Legislative Policy Committee met this last weekend. I want to let you know the OSBA is doing very, very well as an organization, very well financially. It's hired on some new staff and has added some new services. And their influence in the state is clearly growing. So that's very good. Director Moore and Director Constam were also there for the Legislative Policy Committee meeting. They may have things they want to say. I would just mention, since the legislative policy for the next two years is still in draft, it has not been finalized, that I was very encouraged to see the direction that the body as a whole wants to move. Seems to me it's much more sensitive, and it's much more centered on the students. And again, I thought that was very, very encouraging.
Director Constam?
I can take up where you left off with just a few notes from the Legislative and Policy Committee of OSBA. So they are based on the input from the representatives this weekend who will be drafting the first draft of a legislative agenda for 2018 around five or six key issues. Stable and adequate funding, local control, including no unfunded mandates for school districts. Significant, I think, to echo what Paul said, I think there's significant energy from that body around driving conversation around tax reform in this state, as well as also addressing cost drivers in the system. So to know that Measure 101 has passed is a huge relief as that was a great unknown that everyone was anticipating, whether it was going to have to be the subject of the special session here coming up next month. So good work there. And then our Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee met and spent some time talking about the short session of the legislature, which will take place next month, and the few issues that we'll be watching and monitoring there. One of which is a technical fix that we'll be working on that has to do with the language around collection mechanisms for the local option revenue. And our staff will be down in Salem just about full-time in February, keeping an eye on how things progress. And then we talked about, our committee is working on developing an endorsement, a policy on making political endorsements as a board. So at our next meeting, we'll look at the first draft of language and guidelines around that, as well as at our next meeting, staff will bring forward our Title IX sexual harassment policy, which has been long in the making, and we can hopefully move forward. And then we talked about our work plan for the next, items in the next three or four months, and then really the latter part of the year, just working on developing as a district our own legislative agenda for 2018. So that's about it.
Great. Director Constam, we have one other thing. We're going to refer to your committee. The city of Portland recently adopted a seismic retrofit incentive. And basically, it's funded by implementing a tax exemption program for property owners. And obviously, it's a jurisdiction that collects taxes. If there's an exemption, it would result in less, fewer resources for school districts. But the way that it's set up, it allows the city or county with agreement from local jurisdictions representing 75% of the property tax revenues to adopt and implement this program. So it can only be adopted with the consent of jurisdiction. So it looks like we should formulate a point of view. And it seems that your committee would be the place to have that discussion. We can refer that to you.
Yep.
Great. And then we can come back and communicate what our point of view is to, I think, the city or the state. Great, thanks. Anything else?
Do we know the results of the OSB election runoff?
No, I think it's open through the end of this month.
Yes.
Director Moore's been too busy to campaign. She's been like locked in the BAT bargaining room. All right. So is there any other business or other committee referrals? Great, so we're now on the business agenda. The board will now consider the remainder of the business agenda, having already voted on Resolution 5566. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull for a separate discussion and vote?
I would like to pull 5568, please.
Which is?
Referral of Resolutions 5480 and 5481.
Is it, sorry, are these the PD and the? Okay, yeah. So we can pull that out? So I'm going to, can we move the rest of the business agenda? So Ms. Houston, are there any other additional changes to the business agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda with Resolution 5568 removed?
So moved.
Second.
Director Anthony's moves, and Director Constam's seconds. The adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
No.
Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any extensions, student rep?
Yes.
The business agenda is approved by a vote of 7 to 0 with student rep and chair trans- chair, Tran, voting yes. Now, let's go back to Resolution Number 5568. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Director Rosen moves and Director Bailey seconds. The adoption of Resolution Number 5568. I don't think there's going to be any public comment, because it was part of the business agenda. Board discussion. Director Anthony?
I would just like to say that I've been following these two issues for many years, far longer than I've been on the board. And I believe that the superintendent is the right place for them to be handled.
Just point of clarification. Do you think the resolution does that?
I think it removes it to committee.
So, maybe I should explain. So, thank you to former Director Buell, who provided a reminder to board leadership that these had been adopted by the previous board. When we got the reminder, we were, we were already four months past the October date. And we were within three weeks of the February 1 date. And so, the purpose of referring them to committee is just a legislative referral in the sense of, we have resolutions that are overdue. We are just going to send it to committee, ask for, in consultation with the superintendent, ask for the superintendent's staff's recommendation on what the dates are, that they can fulfill this work. So, this isn't going to be the board doing the work. It's, that's the same direction. It's just providing new dates. We could have done it at the full board level. I could have brought a full resolution, but it just seemed to be better to send it to committee, have them basically kick out the two resolutions again, but with dates that reflect when the superintendent and staff feel they can deliver the work.
If I could add?
You didn't want to turn in the report on your first day of work?
These are two important resolutions. I think one asked to have us articulate what are the professional development plans at the school community level. And certainly, we have those inventoried. We'd have those cataloged. Staff has done a lot of digging. We have some draft memos prepared. I just think it warrants a conversation, an in-depth conversation, because we have 86 PD plans. And, you know, our work moving ahead is, how does it all fit with sort of a coherent instructional framework and priorities moving forward? And that's an important conversation. So, I mean, we're looking forward to sort of a next opportunity, whichever opportunity the board identifies as the appropriate one, to begin to have that conversation. And then, the second topic was around, you know, how we're serving our ELL students. We also have articulated and have a memo prepared on that. And we want to get into that conversation as well. So, whether it's in committee or if it's the whole board, I just want to make sure we afford it sort of the time and the dialogue that it deserves. And we have the staff on deck. And if you wanted to hear a highlight, we could certainly do that this evening. But I just think we should, you know, create a dedicated time to be able to do that. And the more board members, the merrier.
And I will say, I think one of the benefits of the, actually of the delay is with tonight's announcement of tentative agreement and moving towards ratification, that, and I think the spirit by which we reach that tentative agreement, they'll be able to have, they'll be able to have the discussions between superintendent and school staff and professional educators in a, in a very different environment than if we were trying to have these conversations three months ago. And also, just, you know, the new contract provisions, assuming it's ratified, will really, will inform many of these, many aspects of this.
I think that's an important point. I mean, we'll certainly present what the offerings and the professional development activity has looked like to date. And a lot of us who are new here have, you know, kind of worked to kind of catalog that. But the real conversation is, what are going to be our priority areas moving forward? And you heard a little bit about scope and sequence work that's occurring. Thank you, Dr. Luis Valentino, for your leadership and the team there. How are we going to address what we know are gaps right now in ensuring we have a viable core curriculum across our grade levels? How does the professional development that we provide and sponsor at the central level cascade down into the work that we want to support our schools with their individual PD plans? And I think, as the public and our administrators learn about the details in this collective bargaining agreement, ensuring that we have dedicated time that's used in a purposeful way to move our academic agenda forward is probably the most critical work that we could do as a school system. So, I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to be a one-meeting conversation. But I think in the spirit of what I think these resolutions are trying to address, I mean, that's going to be ongoing work for us.
And Director Anthony, I think your point is well-taken. This could have been worded differently to be, provide more clarity. But the board is not going to be making a recommendation on either professional development or ESL. We're going to be recommending a new date by which the superintendent and staff will provide the plans as specified in the resolutions. Any other discussion? All right. Last, we've, Resolution 5568 has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Representative Tran?
Yes.
The Resolution 5568 passes by a six-to-one vote with direct, student rep, Tran, voting yes. And, let's see. So, finally, there's one final agenda item the board will be voting on that relates to the education record of a student. And the board is prohibited from disclosing confidential student information. Consequently, the board cannot provide additional details regarding this issue, although we have already had information supplied to us and discussion in the appropriate venue. Board members, do I have a motion to affirm the superintendent's decision on the matter that was discussed in this evening's executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Director Anthony moves and Director Constam seconds. The motion to affirm the superintendent's decision. Board members, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Just point of clarification. Is the student rep allowed to vote?
Absolutely.
I don't think so. Oh, I should be looking at, is the student rep allowed to vote on this?
It's hard to hear. And we need to not be in a straight row next time again. I didn't hear the question.
I was asking our council whether the student rep is allowed to vote on a student discipline?
No.
Okay. So, the motion passes. The superintendent's decision is affirmed by a seven-to-zero vote. And at this point, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on February 13th. And you want to gavel us out, Moses? This meeting is adjourned.